Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Atonwa City Council Meeting. It's five thirty, so I'm going to call our meeting to order, and if everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chris take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Cavendish.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
The next item is to approve tonight's consent agendas or motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Chris take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Epstein do the item nine.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish.
Yes.
Next item is to approve tonight's city council meeting agendas or motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Chris take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish.
Yes.
Okay, before we get to the city administrators' report tonight, I want to kind of take a minute. May is Mental Health Month, and so I have a proclamation here that I want to read and then I'm going to present it to Brittany Hoover with NAMI, so kind of bear with me. Mental Health Month, May twenty twenty five, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation, and half of us will have a mental health diagnosis at some point in our lives. All Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times. Engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illnesses as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions. There is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral health risk and supports specific tools that all Americans can use to protect their health and well-being. With effective treatment, all individuals with mental illnesses, even serious mental illnesses, can make progress towards recovery and lead full and productive lives. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all. Now therefore, I, Richard W. Johnson, Mayor, City of Atonwa, proclaim May twenty twenty five as Mental Health Month in Atonwa, Iowa. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Atonwa to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. Signed, Richard W. Johnson. Brittany, if you'd like to come up, I'd like to present this to you. And if you have anything you'd like to say, you can go to the podium and say a few words if you'd like. We really appreciate all the work that NAMI does.
I appreciate your value and your support, so thank you so much.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
You guys want to say anything?
Yes, thank you.
Feel free to say a few words at the microphone.
Hi, yes, I'm Brittany Hoover, I'm NAMI's such, I was Executive Director. We offer free support groups, programs, and presentations to the community and to individuals struggling with their mental health and their families. I appreciate you squeezing us in because we have a board meeting on your May meeting, so I love that you're able to squeeze us in. I appreciate everyone's support, and we cover eleven counties with Atonwa being one of those counties, and I appreciate all the support that Atonwa has offered us these last few years, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'll go ahead and turn it over to our city administrator, Phil Raff, for his report.
All right, thank you, General Mayor. The first thing I want to do is just provide an update, conference that I was at at the end of last month, and touching on the mental health, it's coincidence, the conference kicked off with a keynote presentation titled "Developing Resilience Through Radical Responsibility", and the first part of the program actually focused upon addressing growing mental health concerns related to individuals working in public service. Facilitator provided some coping strategies for when individuals begin feeling disconnected. A few of the tactics suggested included naming the voice in your head, identifying the unconscious rules you are living by, ask where you are, like where you are right now, developing and committing to a morning routine, writing down your new rules, and establishing your foundational habits. Second part of the program discussed the concepts of the drama triangle, fear, reaction, and control. People can turn into either a victim, villain, or hero, and contrasting that with the empowerment dynamic, which is possibility, responsibility, and conscious action. And those individuals are considered the creator, challenger, and the coach. And then that part focused on how do we move from below the line where the drama is to above the line with empowerment. And one of the things they said is by answering the question, where am I and what do I need to do to get out of there? So if you are below the line, what do you need to do to be able to get above that line? Thursday began with a session entitled Entrepreneurial Operating System for Local Government. A model originates in the business arena and has been incorporated in the past couple of years in Perry, Iowa. There's five key steps to that model: simplify everything, be a good delegator, ability to predict, systemize everything, and building the right structure. In regard to simplification, I think it's probably a little obvious, but less is more. And then more importantly, is being able to focus is a superpower. We systemize everything, having the processes necessary to allow things to be done right, and the best every time. Finally, building the right structure occurs by ensuring employees have what was called GWC, employees who get it, employees who want it, and employees who have capacity. Next couple sessions were overview of programs in the state of Iowa. First, the session called Bringing Communities Together for Regional Development. Content discussed was presented by the English Regional Economic Alliance and some of the success that they've had in the past couple of years as a group. Our next session was how cities work with the Iowa Office of Civil Rights, and as the title suggests, was an overview of their office and what they can do. And then the final session of the day, Ethics, ICMA Tenants Three and Seven, focused on two specific ideals of the ICMA Code of Ethics. That's the International City Community Management Association. Tenant number three is dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships in order that the member may bear respect and confidence of the elected officials, of other officials and employees, and of the public. And number seven is refrain from all political activities which undermine public competence in professional administrators, or specifically refrain from participation to the election of the members of the employed legislative body. That session served as a good reminder of the importance of ethical leadership, especially in the public sector, and it's even more important with political divide, the state and federal levels of government today, which further deteriorates the level of trust people have for government in general, even at the local level. One of the highlights was the reassurance of building an ethical culture and an ethical team were critical to maintaining trust of the public, and even the most trivial seeming infractions should be addressed immediately. And finally, Friday morning was still the discussion of potential legislation and how municipalities could work with state officials to aid in crafting bills that would benefit both. First session was a general legislative update. At that time, representatives from the leading cities discussed current and pending legislation, and that was intermixed with a general discussion among those in attendance. Next session was a discussion on property taxes and budgetary impacts. Main takeaway was that the current property tax system has many holes, which many state legislators are attempting to resolve through legislation. And unlike times in the past, members of the legislature have reached out to the Iowa League of Cities, school districts, and others for advice and feedback, and will ideally result in legislation which is beneficial to all entities. And the final session of the day was the Iowa, or the IACMA Legislative Affairs Update and Next Steps. And that session focused on ways various communities were addressing current and potential legislative actions, and the members of that group were working on a toolkit to assist communities across Iowa with similar desires. All right, so it's kind of overview of conference highlights there, and which leads then into Legislative Updates. There are a couple of bills that have recently passed and are on the way to the governor. Senate File Five ninety-two, the accessory dwelling unit. That's the one that requires cities and counties to adopt ordinances to allow at least one accessory dwelling unit to be built next to a single-family home. It limits the size of the A U to a thousand square feet, or half the size of the main residence, whichever is larger, and allows restriction of such units in historic areas and county interest communities. It also requires a manufactured home be put on a permanent foundation, which includes other limits on regulations by cities and counties. Let's see. There's a fireworks ordinance that has been passed by the Senate. That was Senate File Three oh three. That would strike the power of the county supervisors or city councils to limit the use and display of consumer fireworks on July third and fourth, or December thirty-first. And it is attached to the House version, which allows for a year-round sale of consumer fireworks from permanent structures while prohibiting local governments from restricting their use on July third, fourth, and December thirty-first. I know that fireworks have been an issue, especially around the Fourth of July. It sounds like it may get a little bit worse potentially. Let's see, and then the big one, as I mentioned some moment ago, was talk about trying to revise the property tax system. There is legislation in both the House and the Senate, House Study Bill Three twenty-eight, Senate Study Bill Twelve twenty-seven, and that is looking at a major overhaul to the property tax system, which would provide a new valuation, continue to be outside the revenue restrictions in the bill, two percent revenue restriction, looking at tying that to revenue versus what has previously been a limit on the maximum levy. It looks to increase the homestead exemption up to fifty thousand dollars, and adding CPI-based adjustment into the two percent revenue restrictions. So one thing we don't know yet still is how that might impact tax increment financing. But in general, with looking at models that are out there, this bill would be more beneficial to the city than the current House File Seven eighteen and where that would go over the next few years. And that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Council, have any questions for Phil?
Sort of clarify, if the House Study Bill and Senate Study Bill they passed, then that would mitigate or nullify, like you said, reaching?
Yes, that it would be a new system and would negate any of the current systems that are in place.
That has not yet passed the House, right?
Correct, it's a study bill.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is we're asking if anybody would like to speak on any agenda items tonight. Nobody turned in a slip. We do have one individual who wants to speak on another agenda item that we'll get to later in the meeting, but does anybody plan on wanting to speak on any of our agenda items tonight? Okay, if not, we've got three public hearings, so we'll move into public hearings.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Washington Street reconstruction project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe our Public Works Director, Philip Hertmeyer, is going to handle this.
Thank you, Mayor. So Washington Street was a project from fourth to fifth. We're going to be doing, replacing the pavement, so about just over three thousand square yards of pavement. Drawing up here is showing the extent of the pavement removal replacement. Blue is street pavement, and orange is sidewalk and driveway pavement. That's just a picture of the state of the road right now. We're also replacing inner section of the sewer. This is sanitary sewer, you can see it's not worth lining or fixing. It just needs to be removed and replaced. Next one, that shows an overhead view of the sewer replacing, running from just out of Fourth Street all the way up past bed and then tying into the existing sewer up there, and then connecting, you know, Fourth and the down, Fourth and Fifth. And then we're also separating storm sewer, so the top one, you can see we're adding double intakes on Fourth Street, trying to catch a little bit more of the water before it runs down Washington towards Third Street and Second Street. Then just north of Fourth Street, we're adding double intakes there as well, trying to keep the water coming down that hill from getting on Fourth Street too. And then going up the hill all the way just past Sixth Street is where we're ending the sewer separation and pulling all that storm water on Washington and into its own sewer. And then costs, estimated cost is four hundred, or sorry, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars. We're estimating seven hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred sixty-one will come out of the street construction fund, which is Three oh one, and there's a small water made replacement on this as well, so about seventy-two thousand, that would take the, for water made replacement, which water goes to rivers for. Bids will be received and opened by the City of Atonwa on April thirty, is at two P M. The bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented at the city council meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty-five, or at a later date that's determined by staff. Any questions?
Let's see, timeframe for completion?
We're going to have eighty, eighty working days for this. There's a lot of underground work, so we'll probably give a late start date of June second, which is after school gets out, you know, Fourth Street's pretty heavily traveled, and I would rather not shut it down while schools in session, so we're looking to start it.
So if we're lucky, it'll be done by Christmas.
I think we're going to do it through the Christmas, but yeah.
Thank you.
It's always amazing to me, so you're looking at a couple of blocks of work here in three quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah, a lot of times, if you can stick to just replacing the pavement, you can get by a lot less, but unfortunately, how to get these storm sewers in there, separate from the sanitary sewers, and sanitary sewers would not be efficient either, so that adds a lot to the cost.
Do you estimate that this will do the job, that there won't be any people coming back, wanted to increase the costs and all that?
I think we got it pretty well covered, you know, I don't think there's any, too many surprises.
Okay. Any other questions from council for Philip? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close.
Second.
Chris take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish.
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-three, twenty twenty-five, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Washington Street reconstruction project. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution Number Fifty-three, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-six, annual city budget, and certifying taxes for the city of Atonwa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to our Finance Director, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving citizens' comments prior to consideration of the attached resolution, sixty, twenty twenty-five. To go through some of the procedure tonight, because before you vote on the resolution, you will have three separate motions and three separate votes on the three proposed position, creation of positions within the general fund, those being administrative specialists in the fire department, senior maintenance worker, turf specialist, and facilities manager, which would be basically taking care of city facilities. So again, once I'm done with my presentation, you'll close the hearing, and then you'll vote on those three different motions, each one separate, and then you will vote on the resolution as a whole. However, whatever you decide when it comes to, the state forms are kind of locked into the system already, so the resolution does state that a budget amendment, when as soon as practical, will be brought forward and will reflect whatever approval or non-approval of those positions that happen. So any questions on that before I begin my presentation? Okay? So, presentation this year, I was told last year by a certain person that's very close to me that I was maybe a little too lengthy and a little too dry, so I hope to be a little more entertaining and a little deeper this time. So, this is our second year under House File Seven eighteen, and we continue our progress barring any changes in the system of bringing the consolidated general fund levy to eight dollars and ten cents per thousand to do this, because we wanted to be able to bring that, the general fund levy down slowly over a couple of years so that we aren't just pulling the band-aid off at the end. But in order to do that, we can't just do it with the general fund levy, because we have to beat that or max in order to levy for employee benefits. So what we did instead was we lowered our employee benefits levy by an amount of a hundred thousand dollars that then will not go to help fund all of the employee benefits in the general fund. So that's where we're getting that reduction in revenues for the general fund, while not reducing the levy. So this year, after five years of levy reductions, we're increasing our total levy by point eight, nine percent, which is about a nineteen cent increase. The increase in revenues is one point three five percent. This is due largely to a reduction debt service asking of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, but this is also includes additional geo-debt issuance as well. So we manage our, we're managing our debt pretty well, and we hopefully going forward will be able to do that, because this is our first year in using the CIP to manage capital expenditures. We do have a list of the capital expenditures that were included with the graph budget sent out. The likely due some changes due to lead time on equipment, timing of projects. The CIP that will be presented, update that will be presented in October will reflect those changes. We do have shortfalls in some funds. Those such as the general fund and library fund are planned due to increased costs and slow, or unplanned due to increased costs and slow revenue growth. Others such as road use tax and landfill are planned due to capital projects and purchases. So as mentioned, we have a proposed levy increase, and we look at our valuations though, because our, right now, our levies, how much we can bring in in tax revenue is greatly affected by our levies. And you'll see that our taxable valuation has grown over the years, but it's also taken dips in several years. Meanwhile, a hundred percent valuation is continuing to rise, and because of the current system, the taxable valuations are less than half of the one hundred percent valuations. It could be, these two charts next year may not be applicable because of the current legislation that's out there, because that legislation knows that takes all evaluations up to a hundred percent and then controls property taxes by revenues. We get a cap on how much we can bring in in revenues. So this is a graph of our tenured levy history. You can see that this is the first time it's ticked up in the last several years. We did have a T rate of twenty-one point four five six five zero per thousand in twenty twenty-one, and our proposed rate is twenty point nine nine three nine six per thousand. How does that compare to other cities of our similar size? You can see here that we have the lowest taxable value, but in different areas, we're not necessarily the worst, and we're not necessarily the best. We do have the highest employee benefit levy, and the only way I can explain that is that perhaps several of these communities still have capacity within their general fund, so that they are paying some of those benefits rather than levying completely for them. We have to levy completely for those. One of the things I did this year was I added two new columns, the last two, which is taxes generated. So if you look at Mason City, which is the highest tax revenue generated with the, but they have the lowest levy. That's because their valuation is quite a bit larger than ours. Then I broke it out per capita. Now, when I say per capita, I just took the taxes generated and divided by the population. It doesn't take into account that there is commercial and industrial valuations that are contributing to that tax, but if I did it per capita, what you'll see is that, per capita, that Mason City is higher than us as to the total tax burden per capita. We're much lower than that. I did do one of the calculation real quick. I took our debt service levy and said, okay, based upon our valuations, what do we generate in debt service? And we have basically two point nine million. Mason City, whose debt service is at least a full dollar less than ours per thousand, they generate three point eight million. There's your difference, based upon, you know, valuations. So, yes, we may have a high levy, but when it comes to taxes generated and the per capita, we're doing pretty good. So, where's our money come from? Well, our sources are limited by the state. They say you can only do certain things or bring money in a certain way, but we have to understand where that money comes from. We discussed property tax at the hearing, and the state limits our revenues. In most cases, this limits our rates. As speech of the state, we have to live with those limitations. While the exact breakdown of revenue sources is much more detailed when you get into the line item budget, they break it, it breaks down a whole lot farther. They can be grouped into five general categories. Taxes, which include property tax, hotel motel tax, local offer sales tax, franchise fees, grants, including federal, state, and local, and includes the road use tax, charges for services, income from property and assets, and then non-categorized revenues. So when we look at this as a nice little pie chart there, our largest revenue source is charges for services, which is that big kind of brown area on there. It's orange if it's not up on the screen. And this is logical, because this includes sewer, landfill, recycling, and garbage, among others. The second largest source is property tax at twenty-eight point five percent, the local offer sales tax at eight point eight two percent. Funds from other government agencies, such as grants, is nine point three eight percent in total, excluding road use tax, which is six point eight, and that makes up another combined sixteen percent. All those sources mentioned together are eighty-four and a half percent of all sources of revenue. But let's look at the general fund, because that is the fund that we fund, that provides our most essential services. We need to look a little closer at the revenue, and we see that direct property taxes to the general fund provides thirty-nine point six eight percent of non-transferable revenues. So that's another thing I want to mention. When I talk about revenue expenditures, it does not include transfers. These are just outside sources of revenue, not the internal transfers. So again, thirty-nine point six eight percent of general revenues count for property tax, and another four point five million, almost four point six million in property tax is transferred from the employee benefits fund to the general fund, and that equals seventy-one percent of all property tax received. A second source of revenue, the second largest source of revenue is charges for services, which is thirty-three point eight four percent, and the biggest portion of that is the garbage fees. We operate, we'll pay for the contracted garbage service out of the general fund, not as a enterprise fund. Franchise fees are ten point six percent, and what is not included is nine hundred and fifty thousand that will be transferred from local offer sales tax to the general fund. Okay, so we know where the money comes from, now where does it go? And expenditures are broken down in two ways. They're broken down by program, which the state likes us to have a canvas view, and within the program by type. So the programs are set by a state, and they are public safety, public works, health and social services, culture and recreation, community and economic development, general government, business-type activities, capital expenditures, and debt service. So that's where we get grouped into. So when you look at both the, the state So when you look at both the, the state form and the budget worksheets that I provide to you, the expenditures are broken down by those programs, but then we also break them down by type. So in each fund and in each program period, the types of expenditure are wages and salaries, employees' benefits, staff development, repair maintenance and utilities, contractual services, commodities, capital expenses, and debt service. Before we go on, anybody have any questions on the programs and the types? Of expenditures? No? Okay. So when we look at all expenditures by program, the largest expenditure for program for all funds is capital expenditures of 34.65%. This includes police cars, snow piles, sewer and street projects, building repairs, and trail projects. When looking at operational expenses, the largest program is public safety, which is 18.06%. Followed by public works, which is 15.32%. Business type activities, which is 11.89%. And then culture and recreation, which is 6.08%. Now looking at the general fund, the general fund breakdown is similar in, when it comes to operations in the manner that, manner that public safety is the largest expenditure. But instead of 18% as it is in total expenditures, it's 59.44% of our expenditures. So public safety takes up almost 60% of our general fund budget. Public works is 14.89%. General government is 10.62% and culture and recreation is 9.03%. Any questions on that? So if we look at expenditure by type, total expenditure by type, we see that contractual services are largely an expense at 40.63%. This is due to the, the bulk of capital projects involve hiring contractors to believe to work. So capital expenditures was our largest expenditure by program. The contractual services by type are our, our largest expenditure because of those capital expenditures. Like all cities, employee expenses, expenses, wages, and salaries take, are, are large with 22.808% for wages and salaries, employee benefits at 11.81%. And then capital purchases and other costs make up 10.74% of all other expenditures. So looking at the general fund, by and large, we're a service provider. With the bulk of those services provided through general fund departments, between salary and wages, employee benefits, personnel costs are 72.62% of all operational expenditure within the general fund. So when asked, where does the money go? It goes to pay for people and services. Any questions on that? I am now at the end of my presentation.
Counsel, have any questions for Cole?
Oh, go ahead.
There's a boatload of information there and it's hard to take it all in. And I'm sure folks can't really see the numbers on the board up there. But it is on the website now. This is the new one. I don't know if the new ones up there yet. Each year it is put up there and you can go through a page by page. Copy off some pages to look at or bring in a question or something. It is there.
Correct.
If you want to dive into it.
Yeah, we will put, we will put the entire budget document on the website once it's been approved and in its final form.
And I'm sure if someone's had, someone had questions they could reach out to you.
Exactly. I'm, I'm always open to, to questions. You can stop in, you can call, you can email. I really want to do it. I'll gladly take time to sit down with anyone. This is, you know, the most important thing that council does every year is to pass the budget. And so we want to make sure that everybody understands it, not just the council staff, but the public as well. One thing that I forgot was that the mayor asked me to, to remind you of a couple of things. First, when it does come to property taxes, we are only one piece of the property tax. So people do, do need to remember that when they get their tax bill. You know, when they live in the city, they, they call and they say, and sometimes outside the city, they call and say, I'll put me, you know, my taxes went up by $400. Well, there's a lot of different reasons. Did your valuations go up? What did other taxing entities do besides us? And so we do need to remember the only one piece. The other thing was the mayor wanted me to mention that our total budget with capital and transfers is 84,796,326. But if you take out the capital and transfers, our operational budget is around $45 million.
Do you want to say those numbers again?
So the total budget is 84,796,326. And the operational budget is 45,425,340.
So of the property taxes, aren't we at about 46, 47% of it comes to the city?
Yeah, we're, we're around, you know, we're a little higher than, than, than it used to be. School districts used to be the largest chunk. But because of some of the different things the state has done with the, the school property taxes and other things, we're approaching more of that, that 50% of the, of the taxes paid by city residents.
So less than half of our taxes, our property taxes go to the city, a little less than half.
Yeah, somewhere around that, yeah.
Mr. O'Donnell, I think you've done a good job of explaining. The only thing you've left out is that we're still a half a million dollars short of budget.
Correct.
And this is tax day.
Right. And, and correct. And that's the reason why we're having the vote on three different positions. And depending upon what you do with those positions, I can give you an update as to where we will be on our shortfall for the general fund. Several of you have stopped in to ask how we're going to address the shortfall because we are hoping that through certain positions being open, because we're not always fully staffed, that in the end that shortfall won't either be much smaller or will eventually disbalance the budget out. One of the things that we will start doing is we will present quarterly budget updates, which will be very much more detailed than the, the financial statement that you had in, in tonight's package. We will look through and say where we're at, if we're ahead of, of, on revenues, if we're ahead on expenditures, we're behind on expenditures, however it is, so that we can make adjustments before we get to the point where we can't make adjustments.
So Cole, you answered my question there. I was just going to ask for some clarity on that. But I guess I have another question too. So this year or this past year, we entered into the budget, we entered into the budget season with a shortfall too. And how are we looking at that?
So.
To kind of give some clarity to.
The, the current budget had a $250,000 shortfall. As of right now, we are predicting an actual surplus in the general fund. Depending upon, I'm going through right now and readjusting projected amounts for the end of your budget amendment. And when I get done with that, I'll have a clearer idea of exactly where we are in the general fund. But as of right now, we're looking at probably around a $300,000 surplus.
And then back to what you said, we'll have quarterly updates. Should we want more frequent updates? Those would be available also, correct?
Correct. Once I, once I fill the worksheet, I can pull the data out of the system as it comes in. So if you want monthly, we can do monthly if you want, bi-monthly, however you want it. I can certainly produce those all, once I have it filled, all I have to do is go in and change dates.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make an explanation. Since this is tax day, that doesn't mean you charge more taxes. That means you try to save taxes. Anything that has to do with spending today, I will look no on, period. So I don't want that to shock anybody, but that's the way I feel about it. You can't spend money you don't have. And that's kind of what we're doing.
Counsel, have any other questions for Phil or for Cole?
We will open this up to the public after before closing the meeting too. So if there's anybody in the public who'd like to comment or ask questions.
So when you're, when you're building the budget and it's getting put together, what's your attitude about expenses and about income in general when you're putting numbers together?
What I can tell you, when it, when it comes to income, we try to maximize those sources of income that have the least impact upon citizens. So we try to, if it's in, so for instance, interest on investments. I've set up a system where as our CDs come due, I bid them out to three or four different places. We get the, the maximum interest rate on those CDs. We have entered into a high interest savings account with one institution. IPAT is offering a high rate monthly fixed CD, which right now is around four, almost four and a quarter with current CD rates coming in way less than that. So we're trying to maximize that. When it comes to taxes, we try to hold the lines as best we can. When we were looking at our levy rate, one of the things that we need to do is start levying for benefits in the road use tax fund. Because the funds we get from the state are not meeting operational costs. So we planned on levying for a quarter of those benefits total, quarter of those. And we did, but that still was not going to put the, the road use tax fund in a good position. And we could have said, come back and said, okay, let's levy for another quarter. But we said, we have insurance reserves that we can use this year in order to keep that levy a little bit lower. So that we're not jumping that levy up by another 19 cents or 20 cents or whatever it is. So we try to approach it when it comes to taxes to have the minimal impact upon the citizens as we possibly can. When it comes to expenditures, we have them look at, at what they need and what their priorities are. Sometimes the priorities don't match up with what they need and we have to have discussions on that. Then also, does, does the department's priorities match up with the council's priorities? So we do go through it and we try to make sure that, that, that budget requests are accurate, that they are not inflated or underestimated so that we get an accurate estimate within there. And again, we, we, we try very hard to not put in, and, and we can't put in a lot of wants, if any wants, because of the situation we're in in various funds.
Just in more general terms, your target is to get as accurate numbers as possible. But on the revenue side, we're going to skew to underestimating. And on the expenditure side, overestimating, just so we don't end up in, yeah, that, that, if that's what you're asking, maybe.
That's kind of the direction it's going. Something that you did mention though is the, and it was in the consent agenda, so it wasn't brought out and just in front of everybody. But the, there's some, oh, what do you call these? The monies that's invested in CDs and so on. This is money that the city has.
Correct.
And it shows that at 51,556,990, this is money that's invested in interest-bearing accounts. And that's not, well, that's not some bonds or something for a loan. That's not a loan money to us. That's actual money that we have, obviously in various buckets. It's not, isn't payable for anything, but it's, you know, the city has that amount of money.
Right. Yeah, and, and that's the totality of investment toward all of the fund balances within the, within the city. So there's debt service, there's the sewer fund, there's the landfill fund, there's the general fund, there's road use tax. All those different funds are in that collective balance.
So I have a few questions and I know that the positions are going to be separate conversations, but I guess I have a question in regards to all of them. So then I don't have to ask it three different times. Are there people in, that work within the city that are doing these jobs or could do these positions at the current time?
What I will say as far as, so if we take the administrative assistant for fire department, are there people that can do it? Yes. Are they available? No. When it comes to the senior maintenance turf specialist, I don't know if anybody has the, the proper training at this point. When it comes to the facilities manager, our parts department is handling that right now. So what I will say is, is they, is that during the winter, we get a little more attention to the facilities because they have less grass demo. During the summer, we get a little less attention to the facilities that, they, they come and they respond to when things are, are, are broken, but they don't necessarily get to respond to, to, oh, hey, I think you ought to look at this because I think in the future, there might be a problem. So by having the, the, the idea by proposing the facilities manager, that would give us a dedicated person who year-round could be working on identifying problems within the facilities and, and then also seeing if they get fixed.
And then I just have one last question too. I think it's something for this council and future council, councils could be aware of that when entities give us money, it's phenomenal and it's great to be able to do projects. But I think we also need to make sure we're asking questions, whether it's the council or city staff, about what is the long-term financial burden or responsibility of the city going to be. I think that will help us plan and not have, not kind of feel like we're like, oh, we got to figure something out right now too.
Right. And, and that will be part of any discussion within the future project such as that.
I just want to highlight one other thing and I, I don't remember hearing you say it tonight, if you did, I forgive me, Cole. And I know it was mentioned before, but just for anyone that hasn't been part of the prior conversations. One of the, the major reasons for the budgeted shortfall is because of that, going back to the budgeted practice, it, we're budgeting as if every position was 100% occupied. And there are a number of vacancies across the city and, and they'll happen throughout the year through retirements and for whatever other reasons. And so that is part of it is those are all budgeted 100%. That's not going to necessarily happen unless we miraculously hire 100% of the people before July 1 and keep them unemployed all year long. The other thing is whenever a, there is a vacancy in a position, myself, human resources work with the affected department to verify, is that the right position? Is a position necessary going forward? Do we, you know, is there anything else we can do with that before just automatically posting and rebuilding those positions? So we do look at that very carefully as well in making determination. But also yet to make sure that the jobs, the services are provided to people and that the, our staff providing those services are doing so safely and effectively. Does counsel have any other questions for Cole?
I do have one more comment. I'd like to thank the entire staff that worked on their department budgets that put up with my questions and queries and changes. Without them, this doesn't get done. This is not a one-man job. This is certainly an entire organization job.
So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments they'd like to make about the proposed FY '26 city budget? Yes, sir, you want to come up to the podium and identify yourself?
My name's Ken Paxton. And you guys come up with a budget that's short. I think if you would take your law enforcement and use them, not just to patrol, but actually hand out tickets for saying turning signals, stop signs, speeding, that may help your budget. I think it probably will, very well help your budget.
Well, I think they do that now. We need to become aware of those infractions.
Well, I think they do that now, we need to become aware of those infractions.
Not from what I see.
But you wouldn't see every incident that happens either.
I get cars going by my house eighty mile an hour, thirty-five mile an hour, something. And I don't want to get on the bad side of the law, but I see many police cars turning corners, not using their turning signals. So that's not setting a very good precedent for everybody else. So it's just a thought.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make any comments?
I have a question.
Would you come up to the podium and identify yourself, please, ma'am?
Hi, Katie Howard, eleven, eleven Hamilton. Just a quick question, what is the current overall vacancy rate for county employees on general fund, city?
So right now, we currently have twelve vacant positions.
Which is what percentage?
We have two hundred, we have a hundred and ninety-one full-time equivalent employees, so.
That's, that's across the entire city.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
I would comment on the gentleman's suggestion to send our police department out to write tickets. I can tell you because of the size of our force, it will take a lot away from things that are more important. Well, most important to enforce law. They are more important things they have to take care of. So I, I like what they're doing, I wish they could do more, but you gotta just limit what you're gonna ask them to do.
I got a comment as well, I mean, I, I think they do a fine job. I think with, with the amount of people they have and the stress they're under and things that are going on in the city. I understand that people see things in the, the city that go on and sometimes people go on Facebook and say this and say that. They have no idea where our police department has to stop it. They have no idea how good we have it here, we have a police department that's involved. Now, I understand maybe some tickets don't give you right in some way, but they, they do do a phenomenal job. And there's, there's problems in a ton of what they have to deal with day in and day out. I, I really appreciate everything they do, I think it's a, it's a fine department of men and women who, who do a great job.
Any other questions or comments from the audience regarding FY twenty-six proposed city budget? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion proposed. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Yes.
To consideration of administrative specialists for the fire department with a salary of forty-four thousand, six forty-four point five seven. It is up to council to make a recommendation on this item. I don't have anything listed because it's your recommendation.
The proper procedure was somebody to make a, a motion in the affirmative, and then someone second. And then if you're opposed to it, then you just vote no. So we would need a motion to, to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, so again, this is the administrative specials within the prior department, direct salary cost of forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, fifty-seven cents. If you want the position to be included in the budget, you vote an aye. If you do not, you vote nay.
Cole, to clarify, you said direct salary, just to, again, for everyone's knowledge, because you are lev, or not you, we as a city are, could levy for the benefits.
Correct, because, because we can levy for benefits, that, that does not add to the add or subtract from the deficit. It, the, just the salary does.
Okay, Chris will take the role.
Is everybody ready?
I think so.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Galloway.
No.
Councilmember Hoffman.
No.
Councilmember McIntyre.
No.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
No.
Motion fails.
So now you would be in motion on the senior maintenance worker, turf specialist.
So move. Second.
Was that duh or bill?
Yes.
So the direct salary cost of the turf specialist is fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
I just have a question I forgot to ask earlier, and this may be a field question. So if we don't have a turf specialist and the turf goes bad, do we have to repay the legacy foundation and replace the turf?
I don't think we would have to repay them, but we would certainly foot the cost for reinstalling, reinstalling the turf, yes.
And again, to clarify, we do not have anyone currently on staff that is able to do this.
Not to my knowledge.
Jean?
No.
Could I mention that I did talk with Kelly today at Legacy? And she says they are asking, I have a turf, whoever it is that's make, building the soccer fields. They're asking them to, to stay with us and, and work with us for a few months. Transition to somebody who can do it.
Correct, because, because, just because you approve the salary tonight does not mean we're hiring someone tomorrow. And so we will probably not have somebody in place by the time the turf needs to be managed. And, and if we do, and that goes through, there'd be an opportunity to train that individual on what the specifics of this field would need.
You have future projects, so I would like that. I don't think I missed anything here, is we have been building for a while, maybe in the future, we could plan for that position. So they could have been working with them all this time, you know what I'm saying? So they could have been working with them all this time.
Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
No.
Motion passes four one.
So the last one, we need a motion on facility, facility maintenance manager.
So move.
Second. Direct salary cost is sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents.
Chris will take the role.
Did you guys want to discuss it at all?
Can you enlighten us as to what this person actually does?
Well, what this person would actually do, because we don't have one right now, is, is that they would be in charge of general maintenance of, of facilities. Instead of having a, a parks employee who, again, might be able to spend an hour each day on the facilities. And it may not be any one facility in particular, so it's not an hour at city hall, an hour at, at the library, an hour somewhere else, an hour somewhere else. The facilities manager would be able to do that. They'd be able to, to go in, check each facility on a regular basis. They would identify maintenance issues and then set up a plan to get those maintenance issues taken care of. Rather than the haphazard approach as we are now.
Yeah, and we had, I guess the closest we'd had to this in the past would have been assistant engineer, or actually city engineer Dwight. And he, for example, with this building, would go through, put together a capital plan for the facility needs. Work through the bid forms, the contracts, and oversee the contracts and everything like that. But it would be in any of the city facilities that would require that. So city hall, library, bridge center, the street garage, parks garage, whatever would be necessary. As Cole mentioned, would be able to do an assessment of the buildings on a regular basis and then work through any contracts. Help direct any labor for work that would need to be done within those facilities.
The other thing to think too is that this might not all come from the general fund, just like we do with, say, when our electricians are out working. When they're working at the airport, their labor is charged to the airport. So while it's budgeted right now, one hundred percent out of the general fund, that may not be the case as they move forward.
And if, this is a position where we could have the possibility, if somebody internally apply, be qualified. And if that were the case, we would evaluate if the position they came from would be necessarily through the back table. So there is an opportunity that, it's not necessarily adding additional headcount, but we wouldn't know that until a position is added, advertised for it and, and have that there.
That was a loud speaker sitting there.
He loses his vote now.
Very loud.
Well, now I can hear you now.
Really? Maybe it's broken. Mr. O'Donnell, you are a very fine refurb. Does council want to make a recommendation on this position?
The motion, motion's been made.
We've got it. Okay, is everybody ready to vote? Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Galloway.
No.
Councilmember Hoffman.
No.
Councilmember McIntyre.
No.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so.
Resolution sixty, twenty twenty-five, a resolution adopting the annual budget estimate for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, so just, you know, the, the shortfall in the general fund with the position that you approved is now four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
One more time, please.
Four, six, eight, four, eight, three.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
I need to ask the question, what are we voting on? You voted on approval of the budget. One person needs to tell me. You're voting on approval of the, and adoption of the budget. Okay? No?
Motion carries four one.
I would like to just add something, I have two seconds on the positions. I know there are four positions, I know people went to work, and I just want to be transparent to the public.
Put it in your mouth.
On the fire department position, I voted no because of our deficit, of course, but I do support that position. I'm, I'm not, in the future, I may support that if there's, you know, if we have more funds that we can afford it. So I just wanted, you know, to be clear, as well, you know, as the maintenance worker, if, if we had a little bit more and I could justify it. I just wanted to be transparent to people about that, so thank you.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Mary Street reconstruction project.
We'll go ahead now from the public hearing, and I believe our public works director, Mr. Burke Myers, can handle this.
All right, thank you, mayor. So you've heard about this project a couple of times before, when we had the consultant contract come through. And then also when we had the contract with JCG come through from the East minutes. But a little overview of the project. On this one, we have twelve thousand, six hundred square yards of pavement we're replacing. That's about four times the size of Washington Street. On this is the picture of the pavement condition there, it's probably the best section of road I could find, so.
And this is from Ferry all the way up to Shaw.
Yeah, from Ferry to Shaw. Few changes to the street, we're gonna widen it from East Tracks to our drive to Berry Street out of left turn lane. That'll help some of the congestion with school traffic and make it a little safer for the kiddos to cross at Berry Street as well. They're also adding six hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk from East Tracks to our drive, all the way to West Tracks to our drive. I'll be able to cross West Tracks to our drive and use the sidewalk at the west side there to go, go to the school. No sewer replacement on this project, but we are doing some sewer lining. Just some pictures here of the inside of the sewer pipes, there's a PVC patch inside the clay, clay sewer on the left-hand side. And the right-hand side, it's, it's hard to tell on these, but there's, there's full micro cracks. And there's a high water table out there, so you get a lot of water seeping into the sewers. So we're gonna wind all that and seal it up. Also, on the east end of the project, there's been tracks that are bending, other tracks to our drive and Berry, there's a sewer that runs in the parking area. So we're gonna abandon that sewer, extend those north-south sewers all the way into the street and get rid of a couple of manholes that are sitting in the building's yards. Storm sewer again, do some upgrades to the storm sewer system. The, the spread on the street was wired to DOT allows, so we had to add some intake and upsize some piping out there. We're replacing all existing too. So there's almost three thousand feet of sewer mains and thirty intakes on that stretch of street that we're replacing. Cost and funding, estimated cost was three million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. That has been lost was two million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven seventy-seven. So we got, we'll have a motion to award the contract later this meeting. Price is, came pretty good, I think a lot of the COVID price inflation is, is easing. So we've been getting good prices the last, last year or so on, on streets. Funding, two million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars makes sense. And that's basically all the paving work and all the storm sewer work is paid for by STBG funds, which is the Surface Transportation Block Grant. It's state funding that we get for street construction. They do not cover sanitary sewer repairs, so the sanitary sewer work is gonna come out of the sewer fund, six-ten. And then Water Works has a short section of water main they wanted to replace in this section of street. So the, the remaining sixty-eight thousand, ten dollars and twenty cents is gonna come from Water Works. So there's nothing coming out of general fund or road use or street construction for this project.
The STBG grant is from DOT, correct?
Correct, it's, it's state money that we get allocated to regions and then they allocate to cities.
Is this full-depth concrete?
Yes, it'll be full-depth concrete replacement, yes. With subgrains on it too, so hopefully it lasts longer than the first time it was paid.
I appreciate that you're putting this, how the length and just to show really like how far that money goes. And I think it's important for the public to understand that too, that, you know, your department is working to fix roads, fix their sewers. But, you know, our money only goes so far too.
Does the council have questions? You can take that out of your bucket if you want to add to it.
So.
Mentions ADA complaint on the sidewalk. So that's obviously requirements we have to meet. Is that those traction locks or wherever you see at this?
That, that's a piece of it. So anytime a pedestrian path intersects a vehicle path, do you have detectable warnings there? So be detectable to somebody who's, who can't see. And then you also have to control the slopes, like the longitudinal slope and the cross slope as well. So that someone in a wheelchair can navigate it more easily. So it's, it's a, and it's an ongoing thing, they change the rules all the time. I just watched a presentation over lunch today on how they changed the rules again, but.
Those insert pieces, are they fiberglass, is that what those?
All.
Orange pieces are?
They, people used to use fiberglass and like plastic, but they didn't last because they break out. We used to allow concrete, precast concrete, but those cracked, so now everyone that we put in is cast iron. Cast iron lasts forever.
How much just, for, you know, wondering, how much do those add, those pieces, what are they worth? What, what do you pay for those guys? Because they come in kind of short little pieces and you have to.
I think it's like. I would say around fifty dollars a square foot install. So two foot by four foot line would cost you three, four hundred bucks, four or five hundred bucks.
Any other questions from council for Philip? When will this start and how long will it take?
They're not allowed to close the street till school gets out. And they'll be working. And they'll be working up until fall, this is going to be a longer project than, than Washington Street.
Since I have no children in school, when does school get out?
It gets out the last week in May, so we have a late start date in June second. The project is staged though, so it's being done in stage, not the whole street's not going to close off at once, it's going to close off in four different pieces.
What do you do in front of the school first?
Yeah, that's one reason we kind of delayed it. We thought about having to do a piece on the west end first and then jump them back to the east end when school gets out. Then we thought, well, if it starts raining out this spring and they can't finish the first piece, we can't let them close down Berry Street at the same time, so they'd landblock everybody. But we could push it back and they could be working with schools trying to start up in the fall, and we don't want that piece of street not to be opened up by the time school starts, so we're going to have to start there.
I would say appreciate the willingness of Phil and his staff, working with the school this year, done some of these things, and really thinking through that and finding that out ahead of time. I don't know if that's always been done everywhere, but we've really noticed that with these last few projects.
Yeah, they're working with us on this project to maybe add some temporary drives to increase access for some people, and maybe make those drives permanent, so that way we'll help maybe help the long-term flow of school traffic through there as well.
Well, I had to add to what Phil says too, I appreciate too, because even though our money don't go as far as I used to, you guys really work hard to make it go as far as they can, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, this is a public hearing, does anybody have any comments or questions that they would like to address regarding Mary Street Reconstruction Project? Okay, if not, and the council has no more questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-five twenty twenty five, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Mary Street Reconstruction Project, recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty-five twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinances, we have one ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-two forty-two twenty twenty five, establishing solid waste fees for non-commercial establishments by repealing and replacing section thirty-one and a half through thirty-five of the municipal code of the city of Atomo, Waukolo County, Iowa. Recommendation passed the second consideration of ordinance number thirty-two forty-two twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
And I believe City Administrator Rath is going to handle this.
Yeah, thank you. This ordinance adopts new solid waste fee structure for non-commercial establishment customers. Per the agreement with per city sanitation, per unit cost would increase. To cover that increase, as well as potential increases related to landfill tipping fees, fuel surcharges, cleanups, and administrative costs, an increased fee of down fee per unit per month was recommended for fiscal year twenty-six, and again in fiscal year twenty-seven. That adjustment would result in a new rate of twenty-four dollars and fifty cents per month on July one, twenty twenty-five, and then going to twenty-six dollars per month on July one of twenty twenty-six. First reading was adopted by Board Five Zero, the April first, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Does council have any questions for Administrator Rath?
What's the rate right now?
It would be twenty-three dollars.
And it's going, going up to twenty-four?
Twenty-four fifty.
Twenty-four fifty, thank you.
Any other questions for Phil from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation Railroad Clubhouse Fee Increase, recommendation approve a fee of one hundred and fifty dollars and a fifty dollar damage deposit for rental of railroad clubhouse.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
And I believe Mr. Rath here, Parks Director is going to handle this.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Parks and Recreation Department has started renting the railroad clubhouse, and demand has been strong. The fee was set at fifty dollars per day by city staff, but that fee has proven to be too low. After discussing the fees with other Parks Department staff, I recommend a new fee of one hundred and fifty dollars per day and fifty dollar deposit. This fee increase was approved by the Atomo Parks Advisory Board at their meeting on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Rath?
No, my two cents worth, though, that's a beautiful place, and you guys see it very well, I think, I think one fifty is a, is a, still a very good price.
Especially broken, because that has a kitchen, a bathroom.
Yes, and that's not just like a couple hours, not day and day, that's.
What about parking, is that across the street or around the building?
You'd have to be across the street. Hope it's all weekend there.
Well, there's, at least the first three stalls are grand, right?
But there's plenty of closed parking there.
Any other questions from council for Jean?
You know, so my first stop, when I saw it, I thought, boy, that's a big jump, hundred fifty, but I haven't been in it. So just from hearing what other people said about it, it must be a pretty nice place, it'd be worth the money there.
You know, we'll see how it goes for the rest of the year, a hundred fifty, and if a further increase is necessary, we might try that next year. But it's working out well so far.
And like I said, the big plus is it's not like two or four hours, it's all like you're having a wedding reception and birthday parties.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yep.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation Beach and Tumble Fee Increases, recommendation approve the fees of seven dollars per day for summer daily admission and five dollars per day for indoor pool use only, effective opening of summer twenty twenty-five season.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Jean.
The city of Atomo Parks and Recreation Department is looking for opportunities to generate more revenue from fees and charges due to decreasing general fund revenue. The summer daily admission fee for the beach has not been increased since two thousand and sixteen. Staff recommends an increase from the current six dollars per day to seven dollars per day. The indoor only fee should be increased from four dollars per day to five dollars per day. Listed below are the daily admission fees at other area pools. Bloomfield is five dollars, the Monroe County Aquatic Center is three fifty, Perchville Missouri is seven fifty, the Pella Aquatic Center is nine dollars, and Fun City in Burlington is twelve dollars per day. Increasing the summer daily admission fee to seven dollars per day and the indoor only fee to five dollars per day should increase Beach and Tumble revenue by approximately forty thousand dollars per year.
Does council have any questions for Jean?
No, but some of those fees that are lower than us are just pools, we have a lot more, so even, again, even at seven dollars.
Yeah, they don't have a weight pool, they don't have a speed slide.
Correct.
An indoor pool.
Right, and it's very well vetted, so, I mean, it's.
And there's still an annual fee? You could purchase an annual pass?
Yes, annual passes are for indoors, and then we have a summer pass for outdoor resorts.
You know, I did want to ask that question, how does that affect the summer pass? Does it just go up a little, or does it?
These fees do not affect the summer pass fees.
Okay, the daily fee?
They're separate?
Okay.
How, how much is the summer pass?
Ninety dollars.
Ninety dollars for one?
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Does that ninety dollars allow them to use the inside pool as well as the beach area?
Yes, the entire facility all summer long from Memorial Day weekend until Labor Day weekend.
Okay, thanks.
That breaks down to less than a dollar a day if you buy ninety, or you buy a pass.
Any other questions from council?
Is that a family rate, or is that an individual rate?
That's an individual rate, ninety dollars per person.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Implementing a graffiti wall in the Third Street parking lot on the retaining wall side in front of Fourth Street. Recommendation grant authorization to the Atomo Area Arts Council to create a graffiti wall on the specified area.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, and I believe City Administrator Rath is going to address this.
Yes, I will start this off and, and turn it over to Councilwoman Galloway at the moment here. So city staff was contacted by the Atomo Area Arts Council regarding potential project in the Third Street parking lot. Project would designate retaining wall in this lot as a graffiti wall for a two-year period. Arts Council would oversee the project and maintain the wall, ensuring the artwork is appropriate, and would remove any inappropriate work within ninety-six hours of notification. The wall would be open to any public art contributions following the initial installation, and the wall will be restored to neutral color following two years unless a future extension of the project were approved. And I know there's some additional information Councilwoman Galloway can provide, and it's representative of the area Arts Council.
Thank you. So this project came to light, first off, we're talking about the blue wall in the parking lot. I think you probably all know where City Hall is, there's a big blue wall over in that parking lot. So this project came to light with the Art Council lately, I would say this past year, we've seen a lot more graffiti in the community. Our parks have been tagged, and we wanted to kind of think of some outlets for local artists and give opportunity for people to maybe have some positive art without, and maybe take away from some of this other tagging that's going on in places that it shouldn't be. So the Arts Council sat down and we thought that, we thought it to be very realistic, we looked at other communities who have done graffiti walls, and while there's no like actual data or sign studies out there right now, I have read some articles and talked with some people about seeing a reduction in graffiti in other areas. So the idea is that the Arts Council would oversee and maintain the wall as Administrator Rath identified. And to start the project, we would bring in a professional graffiti artist, and they would, we would also bring some youth in, whether that's high school youth, some younger youth, and some college students to start the wall. Then, once that kind of initial piece of artwork is done, a sign would be put up that would invite the community and members of the community to add their piece to the art wall. And then once the wall is full, or maybe every three months or six months, the wall would be painted over again, and it would begin again. We would monitor on a regular basis to ensure that inappropriate art is not, inappropriate artworks, lanes, all that stuff is not put on the wall. And then within ninety-six hours of that being identified, we would remove that, any of that inappropriate art or language that's been put on the wall. So that's kind of just a, I, I think it also will give the community and youth to an outlet to have accountability and something that they can take some more pride into in our community, and some ownership in also. And it also just brings that a unique visual attraction and enhances kind of an urban environment.
Council, have any questions for Phil or Councilwoman Galloway?
But I just have one, and I, number one, I think it's a fantastic idea, so I support it a hundred percent, so I'll take my question. Will there be in writing what's inappropriate, because that could be?
Yeah.
People who see something that's inappropriate to one may not be, you know, people, they'll just, will there be a, this is what it is, and this is what it is.
Yes, yep, we will have that on a sign, again, kind of explaining what the project is and items that are not to be put on the wall.
Gotcha.
So I like that there's a time limit on it.
Yes.
So we can know what it's going to do. I, my concern is that it wouldn't cause graffiti to go other places, you know? Lately, I haven't really seen, there was a time, you know, some years back, we had a lot of graffiti hitting garage, sides of garages, and it just seemed like a lot. I know now Foster Park got hit. And I understand that maybe the, underneath the highway, the tunnels under the highway, graffiti there.
The bus station gets hit, that little bus, little, not station, but.
Shelter.
Shelter, yeah, gets hit quite a bit.
So.
And again, that's why we did put the time, because it, maybe it won't be successful, but, you know, maybe it will, and it'll create this really cool piece for Atomo too.
We know the weird, the weird fact is, is, is at work, I was actually watching a video on this, and I had no idea, this was a couple months ago. In the city of Detroit, in one neighborhood, they took a, a wall by a bridge, under a bridge, and they opened it up. And I would like to mention, some of those graffiti artists have beautiful art, I mean, I can't believe they could do it. Anyway, when they opened up that wall, it did reduce the bad graffiti in that neighborhood by like seventy percent, so it is a positive. You know, I mean, and that was just to kind of address your, because we would have this fear, but, I mean, it, it gives them a great outlet.
Any chance you could get any railroad artists?
Yeah.
We'll have on trains.
I will cry.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilperson Galloway?
Yes.
Councilman Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilman McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilman Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is resolutions, and we have six resolutions to go through.
Resolution number fifty-nine twenty twenty-five, removing special assessments applied to One Twelve College contained on the following resolutions. One thirty-one, two thousand nine, one twenty-ten, thirteen, two thousand eleven, two fifteen, two thousand eleven, two thirty-eight, twenty twelve, two fifty-two, twenty thirteen, two ninety-one, twenty fourteen, two sixty-eight, twenty fifteen, two eighty-six, twenty sixteen, two sixty-seven, twenty seventeen, two eighty-four, twenty eighteen, two sixty-six, twenty nineteen, two sixty, twenty twenty, two oh-nine, twenty twenty-one, forty-one, twenty twenty-three, and one ninety-nine, twenty twenty-four. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number fifty-nine twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve. Second.
Phil, I believe you're going to cover this.
Thank you. So city staff was contacted by the Atomo Community School District regarding potential acquisition of the property at One Twelve College, which is across the street from the competition gym. This property is a vacant lot, which would be utilized for parking. As part of the district's consideration to acquire the property, they're requesting that the outstanding and pending special assessments would be removed if and when the district would take tax deed to the property. The current special assessments date back two thousand nine, total fourteen thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and eighty-eight cents, with an additional twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars in interest and administrative fees. There is an additional nine hundred and five dollars pending, which will become due September first of twenty twenty-five. So all of those various resolutions were the different costs that they put on. The first one being the most expensive, which was the raising of that property, and since then, there's been a low in cost of a few hundred dollars per year. The interest in penalty, or the interest is the biggest part of that cost. But as you can see, going back two thousand nine, there isn't anybody paying any of this at the moment. Nor will there be any belief that they would pay it going forward. So the request would be to remove those special assessments, and then if and when the school district were to take possession of that property.
So there's a total of forty-three thousand dollars that's sold on this piece of land, correct?
If you include interest, which the interest is only good if someone pays it.
Yeah.
How long have we had that one on that? Since two thousand and nine.
Sorry.
Council, have any questions for Phil?
It's always sums up all the time, with all these types of situations, and we've always ended up giving, you know, giving way on this. Wish we could collect some of it.
Yeah, the other thing I would note is, you know, every year we're accumulating another couple hundred dollars of cost to maintain that property. We would not have that cost going forward then anymore.
Well, at least this goes to help kids too, I mean, you know, in a roundabout way, it goes to help the kids.
Yeah, with increased parking at the new competition gym. Any other questions for Phil? Any other questions for Phil?
Has the school made any indication when they might take possession?
No, not, not a specific date or time, no.
Probably wanted to see what you guys decide tonight. There's no other questions for Phil, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavnis?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-one, twenty twenty-five, approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the City of Tonwa, Iowa, and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of sixteen million sewer revenue capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-five A, of the City of Tonwa, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Someone?
Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell?
The title almost says it all, because that's basically the resolution approves the loan agreement form, authorizes the issuance and approves the taxes and certificates to get for the sixteen million dollars in SRF loans. This loan is for Division Eight, Phase Three of the sewer separation project. Repayment of the note will be through sewer base fees and user fees. Term of the note is twenty years, and interest rate is set at two point eight four percent per annum, and the drawdown will occur as expenses are incurred.
Council, have any questions for Cole?
So the rate is good?
Yes.
You know, that's a good rate. I was hoping we could get some of it and reinvest it in one of our CDs.
Right. Well, we, you do not really want to get interest on bond funds, because if your interest rate that you receive is greater than the interest rate that you're paying, you have to pay a penalty back to the, on the bonds. So being the fact that we draw down as the expenses incur, that'll save us from that. And the, the SRF loan is set up through the state for water and sewer projects like this. And their, their interest rates tend to be below market and much more difficult to pull out on the open bond market.
Any other questions for Cole? Scott, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavnis?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-four, twenty twenty-five, approving the professional services for Bean Street and Incorporated for the CSO Long-Term Control Plan Update Agreement and authorize the mayor to find the agreement. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation, second.
Okay, Phil, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the Long-Term Control Plan was developed to fulfill a requirement from the Iowa DNR for the water pollution control facility's discharge permit. And essentially, you know, twenty years ago, for the DNR to allow us to continue discharging treated wastewater, we had to come up with a plan to how we're going to stop releasing untreated wastewater. So the original Long-Term Control Plan was submitted in two thousand seven, updated in two thousand eleven, with an anticipated completion date of twenty thirty-five. The agreement is once again, this agreement will once again update the Long-Term Control Plan. We will put information explaining completed sewer separation projects and also develop scopes of work and schedules and budgets for future separation projects. On the intent of updating the plan is to secure an extended schedule, which better aligns with the financial realities facing the city. Tonwa is a financially distressed municipality under CSO policy, so we're optimistic that additional flexibility will be provided by the DNR. And I have three members or three employees from Bean Street and Kim, who are our consulting engineers for this project, Randy Johnson, Brittany LaCini, and Ted Bussor. And they're going to give a short presentation on the CSO policy and long control plan and wherever it goes from here.
Good evening, thanks, Philip. As Philip was kind of mentioning, we've been working with the City of Tonwa for twenty-plus years, and Ted was kind of the lead on that, so he's back there, he showed up with me today. But similar presentation I've given before, I'm like, like Philip was saying, this is just something that for you all to operate your, your, your current pollution control facility, you had to take care of the overflow, the bypassing that was happening to the Des Moines River. So if you want us, and you can do another slide here. And, and this kind of just shows, you know, dry weather, the sewage goes to the treatment plant. When you got rainy weather, because you got combined sewers, which means the intakes, the houses, the, the community, everything, if it gets too much, it'll bypass in the river. And so, as part of the NPDS permit that was back in two thousand three, the city had to come up with a plan. And, and Bean Street and Kim had the original plan of two thousand seven, and it was updated within two thousand eleven. That was discussions back and forth with DNR on how to develop the plan and come up with really ten phases. So if you want to go to the next slide. And so, this kind of just updates at two thousand three is when we were hired. Two thousand seven and two thousand eleven, we have the ten phases, and then, I had twenty thirty-five is really when the completion date is, and you go to the next slide. This kind of shows you a little bit of the overall of the map. It's just drainage areas within the city, and the little white boxes are what are called, you know, CSOs. So you had overflows, you had sewage that would go into creeks, streams, and into the Des Moines River. So those were the areas that, that DNR wanted the city to address. So out of the ten phases, we are at Phase Eight. And that's kind of some of the presentations I gave in the past. So Phase One through Phase Seven have been completed. There's still some little bit of auxiliary work in those areas, but I think a majority of that is done, and that's something we will address in our updated Long-Term Control Plan. Phase Eight, as you were well aware, Main Street and kind of south of the railroad, that was what we called a Division One project. Division, and then we had an East of Iowa Avenue project. Division Two is between the schools on Fourth Street, which that should be completing here by November. And actually, we'll be out of the intersection before school starts. But we just had a completion date for them to kind of finish seating, finish driveways, and just other things like that. The big one right now is the Division Three, which we were here before, and that's where you see them right now. And that's about a fourteen million dollar project, and that'll be over the next two and a half years for that completion. Phase Nine is, and Phase Ten, Phase Ten is just pretty much what the city does each year, is cleaning sewers, maintaining sewers, doing some sewer, oh, shoot, just inlays and stuff like that, just to kind of repair those. So I guess line is kind of what you're doing. So Phase Nine will be something we'll kind of discuss in our Long-Term Control Plan. So, again, this is a map that, that Philip's team prepares and submits to the DNR on an annual basis, just showing what's been completed. So everything kind of in the colored areas are things that are either under construction or have been completed by, by the city. And then the kind of yellow stuff, kind of going up, up to the north there, that's still areas that need to be addressed with the Long-Term Control Plan. So next slide, please. This, and you'll see this, so can't really see the numbers, but it's kind of all our phases, the first eight phases. So I think right now, all the project totals from two thousand and eleven on, about ninety-seven thousand, or ninety-seven million dollars. And of that ninety-seven million, we've acquired about thirty million in grants for these projects. So we've assisted the city in getting a lot of grants, and we'll continue to get with grants. So Division Two right now has a two, two-point-five billion STAG grant. And the current Division Three has the SRF loan, but we've already been notified that the city will be forgiven a million dollars on that loan amount. So that's always kind of a nice thing. And it's kind of, as a disadvantaged community, I think they kind of recognize some of that. So hopefully, we can even do some more of that with the future phases, so, next slide. So again, you've seen this, this is Phase Eight. Everything, so the orange, the purple, and the green, kind of along Main Street, that's all been completed. The blue is Division Two that we're currently working on. And then, right above the darker blue is the green, that's Division Three. So we still have to address everything that's to the north of that, next slide. So really, what, what we're asking for is to continue supporting the city with this agreement. And, and what we got to develop is, is more of a timeline that works for the city. I mean, twenty thirty-five seems like a long time, but when these projects take a couple of years to design, three years to construct, I mean, it, it takes a huge impact on budgets. So we believe, as a disadvantaged community, we can show with the sewer rates and with our future projects that we'd like to extend that out to make it more palatable for the city. And, and I think DNR will really go for that, because you've already made a huge investment into this stuff, huge dent into the, to the separation of the sewers. And, and so we will kind of develop smaller projects, a timeline for those projects, look at the sewer rates, also look at what grants, what kind of funding we can get, and then just kind of present that. And we, we anticipate, just as it was in the past, it's going to be several discussions with DNR, probably have different draft reports going back and forth, different plans, and, and we'll continue to support that. Did I miss anything? And we're here for any other questions.
Do you want to mention the dollar amount for your professional services?
I think it was forty-nine thousand.
Yeah. Right here, it's forty-nine thousand five hundred.
Council, have any questions?
So much, how much, let's see, how much extension are you thinking we need? Have you got the ten years to thirty-five, basically, what do you think?
I mean, that's one of the, so, like, Phase Eight, we're supposed to be done in twenty thirty-one. And we, you can, there's no way we're going to make that. And so the other two phases, we can extend out. It's just with us having, I think, three to four more projects, twelve years on just Phase Eight, which that could be like another thirty to forty million. So we know at Phase Eight, we won't meet that timeline in twenty thirty-one. So we would probably ask that, if we went like twenty thirty-five for Phase Eight, and maybe ask for another three to four years for the Phase Nine portion of that. So, I mean, that's kind of what I've always had in my head.
Yeah, it depends on what the DNR will give us, you know, we'll just look at the finances and how much we can afford year by year with the sewer rates we have now, and just project that going forward, so you don't have to increase anymore.
How long have we been fighting this sewer separation?
Well, start. Well, I, I think two thousand one, Ted, were you kind of coming down here?
Two thousand three, but prior to that, the city actually did a couple of separation projects.
Yep.
He did just part of the Clean Water Act, and people always get a chuckle out of this, nineteen seventy-four, and yes, I was a practice prior to that.
Yes, so was I.
Yeah, I know you. So what has happened is that the EPA was woefully behind on the CSO projects. So they made a big rush to get everybody under contract. And we put together with, oh, I'm sorry, see if I can get that here. We put together a whole coalition of cities, and we argued that some of them were going to be EPA permits, some were going to be DNR permits. And we said, you look at the time you've wasted trying to get cities to do this, now suddenly you want to get this done. First, they offered twelve years. We said, we'll fight you, we're not going to do that. And so, because of the coalition of cities, we got as much as twenty-five years. And Cole, we got twenty years for Keokuk, which, by the way, it's still going on, still haven't made much progress. But cities like Iowa City and Council Bluffs and Des Moines and Dubuque, Port Madison, West Kettine, all of those cities, it was really good effort. And we said, no, we got some good legal representation, we fought it, you know, before EPA. And they finally said, yes, let's be reasonable about this, let's agree to something that we think cities could do. Because the notion is, we're not supposed to put cities into poverty by complying with the old regulation that they were really remiss on not getting done earlier. So that's the way it started. And so, it's been going on, but functionally, these sewers were built like in late eighteen nineties. And what they did was, whenever there was a creek, they would kind of fill that in with pipe and material. And so they just said, well, let's say we have one pipe, and it's going to be wastewater and sanitary. And so, across the state, there are some cities that have finished, others we've negotiated a better schedule. And that's our intention, that's why I hang around, I'm more of the historian now, Keith, than anything else. But, so these guys are doing a good job, and we've been very fortunate with some grants. You know, I would encourage you, block grants, SRF. We'll see what happens in DC, because that's, that's really a guess of what's going on and what's going to happen. They did pull back some STAG grants, and so we just needed, but we, you know, routinely we go into DC to try to come up with grant opportunities by working the congressional delegation. I'd encourage you to start doing that again, too, so.
You and I and Administrator Rathmus, I think, went to Washington DC in oh-three. And we picked up a few hundred thousand dollars.
We did.
It was worth the trip.
And without naming any names, we, it was kind of a, it wasn't a very pleasant negotiation. EPA was kind of saying, you have to do this. And so one of our council members, we had a pretty well negotiated, he said, well, I look at the cost of this, we'll agree to it, but we're never going to complete it. And I said, don't say that. But anyway.
That wasn't me to say that.
It was you, somebody else. Anyway, so that's kind of where it is. And I've always enjoyed working with the Tonwa, you're kind of like my second home town, I'm a Des Moines kid, but I've really enjoyed, you know, because you guys have accomplished a heck of a lot, really. And so, keep at it. Any other questions?
Well, you've accomplished quite a bit for us also, thank you.
No, we're part of the team.
Council, have any more questions?
Like, it's just to be clear to you, our STAG grant was not pulled back. We got a payment in this week for it, so.
Good.
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavnis?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-six, twenty twenty-five, awarding the Mary Street Reconstruction Project to Jones Contracting of West Point, Iowa, in the amount of two million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Okay, Mr. Burke Fire?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for the Mary Street Reconstruction Project. Bitter received an open by the Iowa Department of Transportation on March eighth, twenty twenty-five. Four bidders received from the low bidder is Jones Contracting of West Point, Iowa, in the amount of two million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Numbers, like I said before, the engineer's estimate was three million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. Just to reiterate, the service transportation block grant funds will cover all costs for paving sidewalks and storm sewers. Tonwa Water Hydro, once again, team up with the City of Tonwa, take advantage of this opportunity to replace the water main where necessary. And the remaining cost for sanitary sewer work will be covered by the City of Tonwa with sewer maintenance funds, rather than sewer money.
Council, have any questions for Philip?
So, it seemed like Jones Contracting recognized that name, have, have they done good work for us in the past?
Yeah, they do a lot, we're paying them, they do a good job.
Any other questions?
How soon will they start? How soon will they get done?
This is, this is, so June second, when school gets out. I think if they can fit the water main in and not close the street down, they might be able to get that done before school, but they can't close the street down until school gets, school's dismissed.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavnis?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-seven, twenty twenty-five, approving the change order number one for Blake's Branch Sewer Separation, Phase Eight, Division Three Project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty-seven, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So these are my favorite change orders, because they're negative numbers. Please remember that, I'll come back with more money later. So change order number one, it replaces a hundred milliliter trenchless, thirty-six inch sanitary sewer pipe with trenched sewer pipe. The price of the remaining trenchless pipe is increasing due to some fixed costs the contractor had for, with parts and materials, especially equipment. So the, then the changer also adds in zinc coating to the ductile iron water mains and fittings per Tonwa Water Hydro specifications. The total change order is a negative four hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, which gives a new contract sum of fourteen million and twenty-one thousand seventy-three dollars and thirty-three cents. The budget amount is sixteen million, so we're still well under budget for this project.
I like that negative number first.
Yeah. Starting off on the right way.
Any questions from council?
So I understand, trenched? So I understand trench, trenchless, I don't understand any of that.
So if you want to stop, if you want to stop by, I can show you, they're, they're boring in the first trenchless right now. So they dig a big bore pit, a launch pit, and a receiving pit, and just a big machine on, on a set of tracks, and they, they drill into the rock and jack a pipe through it, whereas trenched, you open, cut everything from the top, dig it up.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, approving a professional services agreement between the city of Toma and French Renneker for the water pollution control facility, concrete repair project. Recommendation passing adopt resolution number sixty-eight, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
One more time, Philip.
Thank you, Mayor. So this agreement provides for professional services in connection with design bidding construction phases. There's a lump sum of forty thousand dollars for design services and an estimated thirty-six thousand dollars for construction services, which are to be billed at an hourly rate as sponsored per. This project will include concrete repair for the treatment plant and also at the orchard walnut and grain view pump stations. There's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in our concrete repair budget for FY twenty-five. The target construction budget is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, after accounting for contract professional services and our cost to inspect the project. So we had originally budgeted this money to put all the repair costs into the primary clarifiers, because our long-term capital plans down there had that as one of the projects. Well, when we drained it out, got it inspected, the issues weren't as bad as they originally thought. Rather than spending money on the primary clarifier, wanted to spread that concrete repair cost out over other areas. Got a short presentation here, you can kind of see some of the deterioration. This is Orchard Pump Station, it was built nineteen sixty-two. All those cracks and white lines on the left are just places where water seeps into the concrete. And there's a close-up of one of the corners where it's falling out. Next pump station, Walnut Pump Station, also built nineteen sixty-two, same problems. Concrete's delaminating. I think all these pump stations have the same issue. When they first started putting limestone in concrete, they didn't realize limestone absorbed water, then it freezes in thawed, and it would break down. So there's a timeframe in there when you got concrete that's not as good. So that's the cause of all these problems, is the aggregate. And also the age, they're sixty years old. This is a grain view, this one's not as noticeable, but on the right-hand side, there's crack. This is the lid, concrete lid, and they use it for access to get to the pump stations. They don't like walking right anymore. But same, same issue. You know, cracking, it's falling, and just generally deteriorating concrete. This is the splitter box, the primary clarifier, this is some of the worst areas. Exact same problems, limestone aggregate, freezing in thaw, we call it degrading, just deteriorating. This is the anaerobic digester, built around the same time, nineteen fifty-seven. You can see since falling around where the pipe goes into there. And then those brown streaks going down there are where some of the sludge is leaking completely through the wall and out the outside. So that's just kind of the problems we have, what we want to fix. Those pump stations are sixty years old, sometimes a little bit older. Just trying to get it to last a little bit longer with the city.
Council have any questions?
Repair is not tearing it all out and putting in new, all new concrete, it's, it's fixing some out.
Yeah, so that's part of the, the cost for, for French Renner come out. So we'll mark out the removals, the contractor starts jackhammering away. If they can save the rebar, they'll save the rebar, do a partial depth repair. Sometimes they'll need to do a full depth repair where you can fully cut it out and re-reinforce it. So then, once you get it busted out, you have to take a hammer, you, you knock on it again to see if it sounds solid. And then you just keep going till you hit concrete that sounds solid. My guess is, hopefully, it's not full depth, a lot of it looks like it will be full depth repaired. Then you just keep going down, so you get somewhere where it's, where it's not deteriorated, so you have something solid attached to.
You sure heck don't want to fix something that have halfway done, and then it comes back to haunt you?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Philip? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is our public forum.
Whether during a public hearing or public input period, in order to hold an orderly meeting hearing, we ask that you step to the podium when you are recognized by the mayor and state your name and address into the microphone. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council on any subject pertaining to council actions scheduled for today. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes to allow sufficient time for all those interested in speaking, to ensure all other agenda items receive attention. We now open the public forum portion of the agenda. We invite anyone in the audience who has completed a citizen input request form, residents, property owners, and business owners who wish to address the council on any subject, as with the earlier public comment period. At this time, we are here as a council to listen. Council cannot deliberate on any items brought to their attention during the open forum. However, they can request that your item be placed on an upcoming agenda or connect you with the appropriate city personnel to assist. As a reminder, city council members and city staff are accessible before or after meetings.
We have one person filled out a form, so Mr. Paxton, would you like to come forward? And just for the record, get state your name.
Yeah, my name's Ed Paxton, sixteen East Main Street. I was here last fall, several times, about the property at sixteen oh eight, East Main Street. They're supposed to repair the shed, the roof is still hanging. They still got dilapidated sheds sitting on the property on, on Main Street. They're supposed to open up that again on talking at City Hall, they're supposed to open it back up again. And the other thing is, sixteen seventeen East Main Street, sidewalks are a mess on that side of the street. There's a mattress sitting on the porch. The knee to on the side of the house is falling down. And I think I talked to Phil last year about the property that they did when they redid the sewer in front of my house at sixteen, fourteen East Main. This sidewalk they connected to is all falling apart. And then the grading they did up there, all the water is running down on my driveway. And I'm tracking mud everywhere, every time. Anytime it rains, I track mud to the ground, so I'm constantly cleaning that after raining. Wish something could be done with that, I don't know if DNR or not. The other item is East Main, and I don't know how we have it, it was semi-traffic. They've cut the corners there, run over the sidewalks. And they're taking up three lanes of traffic, making a corner to go back east. I mean, they're tearing your brand new sidewalks and stuff they just put in, they're tearing it all ahead of. The other thing is, I'd like to address old Foster Street that's abandoned on the east side of my house. I'd like to purchase that. A little more responsible on it, it's been abandoned for several years. I guess that's mostly on my wrist. Other than, dang, I love the drive-by sidewalk, which I always find, they're in curbs. You don't care whether the driveway anywhere, people's drives over here, and on the sidewalks, and police tearing sidewalks on Main Street. And I'd like to take that off to you, the police fired, and the ENT for the quick response. They paid to buy a house a few weeks ago. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on any non-agenda item? Okay, the next item on our agenda is mayor or city council reports or communications to the public. I don't have anything specific tonight, but I want to say, does anybody else have any communications they want to make? Okay, if not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending our Toma City Council meeting tonight.